We moved the superintendent's report up to next, so Dr. Jarrett, you're up.
I have no idea.
Okay.
I'm trying to find it.
So are we not having comments?
We do have comments. We'll do that after the superintendent's report. Okay? I don't know. It's on my agenda. I'm just following my agenda.
Why?
Okay. Okay. All right. Okay.
They just finger pointed you.
Okay.
We're happy to make it work. I'm going to defer the majority of my time to Mrs. Fumo to present the MAP report, but I do want to make one comment. I wanted to highlight board member Anthony Dixon. He emceed a Monday MLK Day event that was attended by a number of people. We had our Auburn choir with some West students representing. We had both a state representative along with our U.S. and one of our U.S. senators in attendance along with the mayor. And it was an awesome message, keynoted by Ms. Karen Portis, who is a longtime friend of mine and somebody I greatly admire, going back 20. I've known her for 20-plus years. She has 40-plus years of experience as an educator, and she had an outstanding message for all members of our community around education at that event. So it was really well done, and I wanted to congratulate Mr. Dixon on his hard work in putting that together. And it was an honor to be there and to take that in. It was really a value add to our community. So thank you.
Great. Mrs. Fumo, we're just all so excited to have you here and presenting the MAP growth scores.
Great. I'm glad I can go first. I can go home early, clean my car off, all the snow, and relieve my husband from cooking dinner for six children because we have our two Chinese exchange students here. If any of you have not been keeping up with our sister school visit, I highly encourage you to visit some of the events going on in the next two weeks. So we have 40 kids here from China visiting Auburn Marshall and Montessori. But I'm really here to talk about the winter MAP data. And you all have the slides in your packet, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time going over the details of every single slide because you can see that and you can certainly ask questions. But what I am going to do is just talk about each grade level, some of the big takeaway, some of the observations that I had as I was going through the data and talking to our principals and instructional coaches and teachers about trends that they were seeing and what some of our next steps are going to be as a result. I do want to emphasize that this is like halftime. So we're midway through the year. We have some time to course correct in places where we see concern, and we also have some things to continue to celebrate, some nice trends. And I've essentially given you the data in these slides in three different ways. I really gave you the same information three different ways. So first, I've given it to you just grade level by grade level by grade level. What is the growth and what is the achievement? So I'm going to be talking about two different things. The growth is the percentage of students who met their projection that MAP assigned to them in the fall. So that is the percent of students who met a projection. That's on the left. And then achievement is where they are compared to all the other students in the country that take the MAP test. So what's their national percentile? So those are the two numbers that we're talking about on this first set of slides. And then, starting on Slide 12, I did it a little bit differently by grade cohort. So you could look at a grade level over the past three years because this is now the third winter that we're taking the MAP test. We started it in 2016. And you can see what their trajectory looks like. And then finally, starting on Slide 21, that's just an overview. You can kind of consider that an appendix because it's just in case you want to see all the grade levels lined up next to each other, and you can do that for the growth and then for the national achievement. So let's start with kind of an overview while we're looking at this first slide from kindergarten. Things that I'm really interested in when I look at this data, one thing I'm really interested in is the national percentile because what I really want to see overall is that national percentile ticking up closer and closer and closer. First of all, in my mind, I want it to tick up to the 50th percentile because that is the national average. So I would like to see as many of our grade levels as possible getting to the national average. And you can see in some places we are doing that. And last year, in the spring, in reading, we had two grade levels at or above the 50th percentile, and that was kindergarten and eighth grade. So that was really exciting, and I hope we'll see more of that by the end of this school year as well. It is worth noting that we don't really get credit for students meeting standards on the PARC or IAR test until they're at about the 65th percentile or higher. So I do want to see us getting close to the national average, but the state of Illinois has even higher standards than that. So keep that in mind because as we go through the slides, when we get to some of the later slides, you'll see MAP will let us run a report that gives us a projection or a best guesstimate for PARC or now we're calling, are we still calling it IAR? Illinois Assessment for Right Now. So supposedly, it is still the same assessment questions and the same bank and the same scoring. So we're going to go with what we have as of right now. Our strategic target for growth, before I kind of dive into the details of each grade, the growth target for our district, we want about 60% of our students meeting their projection. And our MAP trainer calls that an audacious aspirational goal. And yet, we continue to see more and more teachers reaching that target every single time. So there's a lot to celebrate there. We know we need to make more growth than the national average. On average, about 50% of students meet their growth target, and then you give a MAP test, we need to do better than that because we have some ground to make up. So we know what our struggles are, and we're doing our best to put plans in place to reach them. And in many classrooms across the district, we are seeing more and more and more growth. In 2016, I was so excited when I saw a classroom that had growth in the 70th, 75th percentile. And this year, that's almost normal. I mean, we see that in every single school building, and now we're seeing people with growth in the 80s, the 90s. We even have a kindergarten teacher at Hillman with 100% of students meeting growth targets. So lots to celebrate, classroom to classroom, in the growth arena. So let's look specifically at kindergarten. What are some of the trends that we see here? So we've stopped the extreme drop in scores that we saw in 2016. In 2016, in many of the grade levels, from the fall test to the winter test, we plummeted in national percentile. And we have pretty much arrested that across the board in every grade level. And in many places now, we're seeing growth. So even in places where we don't see quite the exact same amount of growth or the exact same percentile that we saw last year, we're still much better off than we were in the winter. And in many, many cases, like here for kindergarten, you'll see we're over our 60% target for growth in math, and we are well above the 50th percentile for growth in reading. And you can see that in our winter reading, we're at the 48th percentile for kindergarten. So that's really, really good news. I think we're seeing some of the strategies we've been trying with reading horizons and foundational literacy start to pay off here. Let's look at first grade. So similar to first grade, we see a slight dip in growth projections from last year at this time, but it's nothing really alarming because our national percentile has risen since the fall in math and reading, again, unlike 2016. Our math national percentile continues to rise, both fall to winter and year over year. And this is an indicator of the success that our teachers are seeing with our new math curriculum. And kudos to Susan Urum and to our math curriculum leadership teams for the hard work they've done over the past three years because that curriculum is well underway and getting a lot of traction. In second grade, we have some really big wins, especially in math. You can see that since last year, our math achievement percentile is up 10% over where they were last year, and our growth is up from 49% to 54% of students meeting targets. We do start to see here a little bit of dip in reading, and you'll probably hear us refer to that in different circles as an implementation dip for integrated literacy. So we are starting to see a slight decline from last year, but not nearly as much as we saw in 2016 as our teachers are learning the new integrated literacy curriculum. And you're going to see that a little bit as we continue to go up through the elementary grade levels. And so just keep in mind that, just like the math curriculum, which we're now in our third year of, we're in our first year of integrated literacy, and it's going to take everyone some time to adjust to that and to learn what the best practices are in instruction because now they're integrating five subjects into one with the new curriculum map. So it's really challenging, and we're learning more all the time about the best way to support teachers, how to do that. So third grade. Third grade, we're up a little bit in our growth in math, and we're down just a tiny bit in our growth in reading. But my main concern is the national percentile for achievement in reading and math. You can see that this is significantly lower than kindergarten, first, and second grade. We're down in single digits in the reading national percentile, and we are only at 12% in math. And we have a lot of hypotheses about why this is true. The MAP test changes in third grade. There's the K-2 test, and then there's a 3-5 test. So there is a little bit of difference in the way that children answer the test questions and a little bit of difference in the bank of questions where they start answering the questions. But this is definitely an area where we need to shine our flashlight and dig deeper and figure out what we can be doing differently. In third grade, instead of reading to learn, no, instead of learning to read, now students are showing to read to learn. And so there's definitely a shift in instruction. Third grade teachers, I've definitely had some conversation with them about the best way to use reading horizons, our phonics program, and foundational literacy, and how much of the time is appropriate to spend on phonics in third grade, and how do we balance that with all of the other pieces of integrated literacy. So there are some really robust discussions, and teachers have some really great theories, but we're still digging into what's happening in third grade. Fourth grade, we see our math growth targets holding steady and reading declining just slightly. And then same thing for our math and reading percentile. So we don't have a big drop since last year or since 2016, but we definitely aren't seeing the gains that we're seeing in some of those early grades. So we still see that, starting in third grade, we have some regression in our national percentile, and we have some ground that we need to make up there. So we're investigating third and fourth grade. I have a collection of grade teams that are meeting district targets, grade teams that are outperforming this average, and looking at what are they doing. We're having conversations with instructional coaches, with grade level teams, with individual classrooms who've had fantastic performance, and just sitting down and saying, what is working for you, and are there ways that we can replicate that across the district? So fifth grade, we're still slightly above the national average for growth, but we're still in the teens for reading and math. So we're starting to come up a little bit from that big dip that we saw in third grade. This is the same overall trend that we've seen for the third year in a row. So our upper elementary, we definitely have some work to do. In sixth grade, as in the previous years, we start to pull out of that slump that started in third grade, but we're still not rising really quickly. It'll be interesting in just a minute when we look at the grade level cohorts to see that trend over time. And I'll also call your attention to the IAR projections up at the top of each of those slides because despite our slump in reading scores, our reading scores on IAR are predicted by the MAP test to go up. And for the past two years, that number has been fairly accurate for our district level scores. So we see some variation in the school-to-school prediction, but our district level score has been pretty consistent for the past two years. In seventh grade, we have a slight decline in math growth and achievement over last year at this time, but what I would really consider to be a red flag in reading. We did have two schools piloting a literacy block period, and that was Kennedy and Eisenhower. They both saw a decline in scores. They had some negative growth. And so this is something that we really need to get in front of between now and next year when the other schools are scheduled to roll out the literacy block for middle school. So we need to figure out what was working for them and what was not working for them. We know that there were some issues at Kennedy with having full-time certified staff in all classrooms. So that's definitely an issue to take into consideration, and we just need to continue to look and see what's happening. But again, in just a minute, I'm going to call your attention to the grade level cohort because despite the drop in this individual grade level from winter to winter, this grade level cohort continues to increase in national percentile. And by eighth grade, our reading average percentile is back up in the 40s. So we have this big dip from second grade back up to eighth grade. And I think, as a thinker about school improvement, my big takeaway here is what if we didn't have that drop? What if we continued to have incremental gains year over year over year? We could really be launching our kids into high school, ready to be competitive with the rest of the state. So those are some of the things that I'm looking into from the work that I do with the instructional coaches and looking at PDSA in the classroom with principals who are trying it and just continuing to investigate. We've seen the same trend. You can see we're still up over the 50th percentile for growth in eighth grade. We're back up in the 20th percentile for math, and this was where we were at the 50th percentile last year for reading by the end of the year. And it looks like we're on a trajectory to continue to be there. So it's really interesting to look at the grade cohort. So this is third grade, and you can see what we did last year in IAR in math and reading or in PARC and then projected for this year based on our current trajectory. And then you can see the grade level cohort, the current third graders, and where they were in first grade, second grade, and third grade. So you see exactly what I was describing to you just a minute ago about that third grade plummet in reading and math. And then here's the fourth grade. So these fourth graders are 4% higher. They had a little bit of a dip in math, but they're still 4% higher than they were in second grade, and they have a steady climb from where they were in second grade in reading, from the seventh percentile to the 12th percentile. And then in fifth grade, we climb up steadily in math from the sixth to the 11th to 12th, and then in reading, from the ninth to the 14th, and they're holding study at the 14th. And we can see that in third grade, our IAR projection to meet or exceed is 6% up over last year. So I'll be really interested to see how that really plays out on the test. So despite we're plummeting in terms of our national percentile, we're projected to have more kids actually meeting standards. So you have to think about where the line is drawn as far as the state is concerned and how many kids we have up at that level and how many kids are moving over that line. So then I'm back at sixth grade, and now this is, I really like to look at the middle school slides for this. Seventh and 11th and ninth, we had a little bit of a dip in math, but in reading, we go 12, 16, and 19. So these sixth graders have come up seven percentile in the past two years in the national average. And then our seventh graders have gone up nine percentile from 15 to 24. And then math, you see, they're up 4% from where they were two years ago. So we see these incremental gains for these grade cohorts year over year. And then eighth grade, from the 15th percentile in sixth grade to the 32nd percentile now. So that is some really phenomenal growth that we're seeing at our middle school level. And we see from the seventh grade, in math, from the seventh percentile to the 23rd percentile. So there's a lot of information here and a lot to dig through and a lot to think about. So we have to really stop and decide, what are we going to do next? We're going to investigate the bright spots like I described a few minutes ago. We're correlating our short-cycle data. So almost all the schools are doing some version of PDSA in the classroom, or we call it SMART in the classroom. And they're having PLCs set short-cycle goals, and they're monitoring progress around very specific learning targets. Well, now we can go back from the fall and look at what learning targets did they choose to focus on? And are we seeing grade level performance on those same targets on the MAP test? Because the learning continuum of MAP will give us that very specific information. It takes a lot of time to do that work, but that's one of our next steps to do in the next month or so. We're going to be sharing solutions between same-grade teams. What did you find that worked? What did you find that worked? What were your barriers? How can we learn from each other? Are these things that we can replicate across our system and spread the success? We're really going to be doing some math data analysis by building because you can see that our IAR projection is down over last year by about 2%. And again, that's just a projection, but that's a good red flag for us to take heat of here at halftime and make sure that we have all the pieces in place for our math curriculum and see if there's anything else that we can be doing. And we're going to be continuing our integrated literacy support for the rest of this year and into the coming years because it is a complex framework for teaching, and we're listening to what our teachers need and designing supports around that as we go. So that was a lot of numbers. What questions do you have?
Mr. Escobedo.
So, yeah, I mean, it's great to look at the grade level, but one of the things I was interested in, and I'd asked previously, is to get a breakdown by school, to see a picture of what schools may need more assistance and what bright spots in some schools we may have. Because at the end of the day, every school has different environment, different. I guess I'm still interested in that data, if we can get a breakdown by school level.
We have breakdown by schools. It is 50 pages of fascinating reading.
Yeah. I mean, if something's available on a spreadsheet, we can easily, I mean, it can easily be thrown and pivot table created, and you can easily sort it through. Great, so.
We've also broken it down, and Susan summarized on the slides teams that are standing out as well. So you can see the bright spots of grade level teams that are hitting growth targets and making progress as well. So we can talk about breaking that down by school.
Yeah. One thing I did for principals for SIP Day a few weeks ago was I graphed every single grade level in their school by the conditional growth index. So that's kind of the total amount of growth that they're making compared to the projection that they were predicted to make. And I compared it for each grade level to our district average conditional growth. Conditional growth is, can be a little tricky, so I didn't put that in these slides, but I can certainly make that available to you. And then you can see for every school and every grade level exactly which teams are above the average growth and below our average growth. Just for our district, I wanted to give them some sort of apples-to-apples comparison here in-house and not compared to the national norms. So I can certainly share that with you.
Then the other quick question is what, because we talked about this a year ago. We started a discussion about, okay, so it's great, it's halftime, right? But we only got another half, and it's critical. We talked about getting some metrics that we can monitor on a weekly basis. So what key indicators would be good to monitor? Going for any suggestions on whether it's student attendance, teacher attendance, engagement?
Well, the scorecard has a lot of the metrics that we have decided are leading indicators, and there's also lagging indicators. One thing that's not on the scorecard that we are asking principals to look at is the results of those short-cycle goals. So that wouldn't necessarily be weekly because every single learning target doesn't make sense to monitor every single week. It really depends on the grade level and what learning target it is. But most of the principals are collecting the progress of their grade level teams on specific, or in secondary school of their subject area teams, around very specific learning targets. We're asking teams to pick targets that they think are leverageable, that will help move the needle on a lot of indicators over time. So that has required intensive training in the fall, and we continue to support principals in that work.
Yeah. I mean, the key is that, you know, we got to start monitoring key metrics throughout more regularly as opposed to waiting halfway through the year and then, you know, the results are not what we expected. It's just we got to keep monitoring more regularly so we can make corrections and make adjustments as needed throughout. That's my take.
One body of data that I have in my control is the instructional coaching cycle data. Every time an instructional coach does a coaching cycle with an elementary teacher, we monitor the proficiency level of students at the beginning of the cycle around the learning target that the teacher chose and then at the end. So we have over 400 data points from the past two years that show that teachers that are engaged in a coaching cycle tend to have better-than-average growth on the MAP test. So that's one short-term data point that we have.
Mr. Owens?
I've got one specific question and a couple of open-ended questions. But the specific question is, and you've already sort of touched on this, you know, we've got here the growth, growth projections, students meeting growth projections, and then achievement. But I thought that we were sort of moving toward the conditional growth index because I think we've all figured out that with, when you have kids that are starting off behind, you could have 100% of them meet their growth targets, and they're not making progress in closing the achievement gap. So I guess I'm less interested in seeing the students meeting growth projections, and if we are going to, if the conditional growth index is what's telling us what progress we're making in moving kids ahead, then I guess I'm more interested in starting to see more about the conditional growth index and how we're doing on that, even though, even though I understand the conditional growth index when it's explained to me, I can't remember it two days later. So I couldn't tell you right now.
Which is why I didn't put it in these slides, but I'm happy to share that information with all of you. I personally think that the conditional growth index is the most interesting thing to talk about because a teacher could have several students who don't quite make their growth projection, and so they don't get counted in that number, but they still count towards the overall growth of the class. So I think it gives you a little bit more of an accurate picture. You do see a rough correlation between the percentage of students meeting a growth target and the CGI, but for, there are some schools where it's really clear that the CGI is different, and it's really interesting to talk about why.
That'd be a great conversation. The open-ended questions, I guess, since you're sort of on the front lines of this, and this is an important issue for all of us. I mean, what do you see that's working? What do you think we as an organization can do to accelerate the growth and achievement? What can we as a board do? What can we as a school district do? And what do you see as the barriers? I mean, what are the things that we need to change?
Well, I think in all the listening that I do in schools with teachers and principals and the instructional coaches, particularly because that is the group that I work with the most, two big themes are emerging this year. And one is the social-emotional needs of students, and I'm sure that you guys have heard that as well. Many students, we're reporting over time, over the last few years especially, teachers report higher and higher incidence of social-emotional needs that make it harder and harder for kids to learn and harder and harder for them to teach grade-level content. And so they are always asking, every quality peer review that I've run this year, teachers voice the need for a full-time social worker in every single building. I don't know how feasible that is, and I don't even know, from my stripe on the ball because I'm not an expert in social-emotional learning, how productive that is. I think that what we need to start doing is helping teachers find a toolkit of tactics to support their students. So just putting a social worker in the school, for example, isn't necessarily going to solve all of the problems. If we're also partnering that with training, not just a one-time training, but a series of ongoing trainings in ways that they can support their students in partnership with a social worker, in a partnership with a psychology, in partnership with a problem-solving team, that they can start to feel more empowered to address students' needs and start teaching grade-level content. When it comes to grade-level content, what I'm hearing over and over again is that teachers need more tools in their toolbox for differentiation of instruction. We can see that if we're starting so far below in some of these averages, we're starting at the 9th percentile in some places, then starting to deliver instruction right at the grade-level standard is not going to work for some students. So they need to know, how do we scaffold the instruction up to that level? And I'm hearing teachers say they're not always sure how to do that, and they don't always know how to do it in an efficient and timely manner because it's going to require a lot more planning time. So those are things we need to be building into our curriculum maps, and the math map definitely has those pieces in place. And I think you can see that that plays out in some of our data. The integrated- The integrated literacy map is so new, we're still building those pieces into it. So those are, from my stripe on the ball, the two big needs that I'm hearing from teachers. Social-emotional supports and, and training, ongoing training. Not, they say, oh, we went to this one training and it was great, but it was just that one time. We need to keep spiraling and spiraling and spiraling. And with school improvement days disappearing from the calendar, how do we do that? So how do we get creative about offering that time? I know that Melissa Douglas has gone into buildings all throughout the fall and spent time during the school day, meeting with grade-level teams during their planning time, and that seems like it's been a really effective way to really meet teachers where they are in job-embedded professional development during their workday. So I think we are thinking outside the box and trying different solutions with that. The instructional coaches have definitely helped with that the past two years because they are literally in the classroom, partnering with the teachers, modeling best-practice instruction, giving real-time advice. They are for asking questions, reflection, you know, during a lesson, right after a lesson. So as we continue to maximize rigorous and engaging instruction, those are things we need to be considering all the time.
Seagull.
You mentioned that the testing in third grade changes. Can you explain to me what that change is?
The biggest change is that the test is no longer read to the students. In kindergarten, first, and second grade, they have headphones on and the test is read to them. So when you have a student, because it's an adaptive test, when you have a student that is starting to answer harder and harder questions, they will phase out of the reading part, and even in first grade or second grade, it will stop reading to them. In third grade, it never reads to them. So they're just coming in at a different beginning point for many students.
So it would seem to me that their ability to perform well on the test is dependent upon their ability to read starting in third grade?
It would appear that way. We are, we've gone back and forth with our MAP trainers about what's the best test for which grade level, and the, the added question for that is, should we be enabling, for example, for the math test in third grade for students who can't read, we can turn on an option that allows the test to be read for, read to them. So that sounds, in theory, like a great idea, but we have to do that. Well, if we're testing their math ability, we want to know what they can do mathematically.
I understand.
So, but we have, we would have to, we have to tough protocols so that we're doing the same thing consistently across our district, or then our data is just a mess.
But doing that then asks a question, well, do we then also have the test read to them in fourth grade and beyond?
Agreed.
Is it really the better question, do we have the test not read to them in second grade or first grade? And I learned a new word a month, a month ago, like, but work on the automaticity, I think that's the word, of reading so that we don't have to depend on any of it being read to them, but rather the, because eventually they have to know how to read in order to perform on the test.
I think you just made a lot of second-grade teachers in the district really happy, and you struck fear into the hearts of a lot of other second-grade teachers. This is a hot topic. What is the best way to ascertain what our students know as second graders?
I was actually going after the first-grade teachers, but that's okay. I'll hit you in a second. Thank you.
Mr. Dixon, did you have another question?
Well, it really was based on, echoing pretty much what Dave said, Mr. Seagull said, was, there is a change between the third grade. Are we doing everything possible in second grade to prepare them for third grade? And then the question was, is it second grade's responsibility, or is it third grade's responsibility to make sure that they're ready? So those, those were, those were some of the thoughts that were coming across my mind. And you answered some of them, but some of them, I, I just, I'm out to dig in a little deeper and just meditate it, you know, a little bit longer.
And I will also be digging deeper over the next month because I think you've hit on a key pedagogical question. And, and some of it comes down to the learning to read and reading to learn, and how do we balance in our integrated literacy curriculum the right amount of foundational literacy and phonics and decoding and fluency, and then with comprehension and higher-level reading skills, inferencing, for example? How do we balance those things in a meaningful way as we scale up from kindergarten to fifth grade? And our curriculum maps are doing a great job wrestling with that question and leaving a lot of room for teachers to make the best decisions for their specific students based on their specific classroom data, but we definitely need to tighten up what that looks like across our district.
If we, if we find out that students are struggling in third grade, are we giving them more help as far as one-on-one time, reading time? Are we adjusting the class to, to help them to be successful? And how, I guess, then that goes on to what Jaime was saying, was, we don't want to wait a half a year to realize that they needed help six months ago. So how do we put all of that together to, to, to help them soon as possible? That's...
Well, some of that is school-dependent. So schools will look at their data at this time of year and decide, what is our plan going to be? Look at our different grade levels. We have this many tutors available to us. We have one Title I teacher or two Title I teachers to do these interventions, and based on our data, who gets the extra help? So those are questions that schools are grappling with right now. I can give you an example of a way that a school has used that in third grade. I saw this a few weeks ago at the Brookview Quality Peer Review. They have five tutors and four third-grade teachers. And so every day, for a certain period of time, it's about half an hour, and it's not, they do it four days a week, I think. They have looked at those kids' MAP scores and specifically what skills they need to work on in different sections of the third-grade class, and they have nine groups, five teachers, four classroom teachers, five tutors and four classroom teachers, and they divide the kids into nine groups. So they can work with small groups specifically on the skills that they need. And that was a great team that had really good data. So that, for growth for this period of time. So that is one example of a system that we could replicate in different schools across the district because we've seen them have success with it. Did that answer your question? Address your question?
No, it, it, it did address. So you addressed, that's one incident. How do we get everybody to get on board to see the success? It's not good just for one class or one school to just have success. How do I get, because what I've, what I've seen is, third grade, with third grade, that's the time where most students, if they can't read, they start acting out. And so we have increasing behavior problems. And then it just, it just snowfall, it just snowball effect. So now they're, they, because they're acting out, now they're farther out of class, so they can't get more training, and they're the ones that need to help. And so it's just a snowball effect. So what, what can we do to stop? Because you go into third, and you go into fourth, and you go into fifth, and, you know, I'm not trying to beat the dead horse, but what can we do? That's all. And some of the stuff that you said, I believe that's going to be, it's going to help. I just don't know, I don't know how to tackle that fullness, and that's...
I think you're asking the million-dollar question. I think if we all knew exactly what would work, we would have done it by now. So we're a learning organization, and this is an example of a way we learn. We've seen a place that is having success with the way they organize the resources that we have, and we're sharing that with as many other schools as can, can see. And some schools don't have five tutors. Some schools have allocated their resources differently. They might have two Title I teachers, for example. So everybody has to take the resources that they have and decide, based on their data, the best way to distribute them.
Mr. Connor?
Did I hear you correctly that you said that there was a curriculum measure that you use to correlate to the achievement? You mentioned something about curriculum as a, and I thought you said something about that correlating to the achievement? Or maybe it was the growth?
As far as the short-cycle goals within an instructional coaching cycle, is that the one? So the coaches set goals with teachers that they're working with in a, in a coaching cycle, and our goal is that 90% of teachers will have worked in an instructional coaching, elementary teachers will have been in an instructional coaching cycle by the end of this school year. So we track the level of proficiency of the students involved in that coaching cycle, and then we correlate it to our MAP data to see if we're seeing, what are we seeing growth-wise for those teachers and students, and what are we seeing achievement-wise?
Okay, so that's a, would you consider that a correlated factor in that?
Loosely, yes.
Well, I, I think the, the point that I'd like to make, I'm kind of going off of what Mr. Escobedo said earlier, is, number one, I know I would like the actual stats myself, you know, kind of the limited file CSV, whatever. Okay. Because I do ask myself that question, is when we have these results and you have things like that, I would think that we would do some kinds of statistics, standard deviations to see the factors that might correlate. So that's why when you mentioned that, I wondered if, systemically, if there are things that we should do. So for example, and maybe we've got this, is, you know, the students that read at grade level and their achievements. I mean, I suspect we have that kind of thing so that we can actually see that relationship, and particularly school by school, I would think.
Yes, so different principals have asked to have the data run different ways. The MAP reports offer a certain canned option of limited reports. I've had several principals reach out and say, I want to know the number of students at each grade level reading at or above the 50th percentile.
Yeah, exactly.
And so for that, we have to run a CSV file and filter it, and many schools are engaged in doing that level of research.
So I guess the question that I have in my own mind is, frankly speaking, why wouldn't all the schools be interested? I, I would think that we would have a standard, I think one of the things that we've been discussing as board as we look at this is, giving people freedom by school and frankly, by student makes a lot of sense. But when it comes to actual metrics, it seems like having some standards that we track would allow us to see more trending. And if we picked the wrong factors, obviously that hurts us, but if we don't pick any, we really don't have that basis. And I would say, pun intended, an educated guess would be better than no guess on some of this, and that we would like to see those stats, so that the correlation, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and to your point, that's why we have a, a school scorecard. And, and so we don't want schools slicing and dicing the data 19 different ways and spinning their wheels. We really want to settle on a few highly successful ways of identifying how students are doing from a growth perspective and an attainment slash achievement perspective, and, and break it down according to different demographic subgroups, and that's all baked into our scorecard system. And so the next big step for us to address the, this work is going to be making sure that all of our schools, 17, 18, gets entered into our scorecard as well as their progress in 18, 19. So then we'll have two years of data, and then as we go into the 19, 20 school year, we'll have that as a really strong two-year baseline so that we can, you know, really have them honing in on that. But I, I don't think they need more ways to measure how the students are doing. I think we need to be more effective at being consistent about what success looks like and making sure schools are focused on that. And we talk a lot about making sure they're not fishing for the data, but that they have that delivered to them so that, in a format that is usable. So, that, that's, that's a big part of our journey right now, is to make sure that we have it in a standard format, we can talk about how each school is doing, and evaluate the, the success from the student level all the way to the teacher level, to teams of teachers, to the school. So that's coming next. I know it's frustrating that that isn't fully operational yet.
Sure.
But that is where we are heading to your point, so that, so that you don't have to hunt around for it in some type of a random report, but that we can see how each school is progressing at each level.
Sure. I think the, the only thing I'd say is, yeah, the delivery of that to us, whatever makes sense from the, if you will, IT side on the actual stats, and whether it goes to Forecast Five or we get through our data, something like that.
On the scorecard, there are currently three metrics that address MAP scores. That's CGI, which Mr. Rollins was speaking about, and we want our CGI to be above .55. Percentage of students meeting grade-level targets in our audacious goal is 60% of students are meeting their growth targets. And then the other projection that we're looking at is, what is the average RIT score for each grade? So we have normed data from MAP with all of their data points, and they say, this is the average score for a second grader in RIT score. And so we're looking at, what is our average RIT score? That will also be on the school scorecard.
The only thing I'm going to add for all the nerds is, this is exactly where AI and big data would come in, this very thing, because there's a lot of predictive models that you can do from this. So I would say to Mr. Bartow in particular, is, you know, put your head into it, buddy, because this is where we're all headed, right?
Susan, I have, I have a question about, you know, in high school, we help students prepare for the ACT or the SAT now, you know, whatever, by offering courses on, you know, preparing them for that test or whatever. Would, would there be any value at the elementary level to helping students be better test-takers when it, when it comes to MAP or, or IAR now, or whatever, you know, in that, not to teach them the answers, but to teach them to be better test-takers?
So I today got an email from the instructional coach at Washington Elementary, and she was sharing with all the instructional coaches a very short series of presentations that she had put together, the principal asked her to do at their morning meeting of all the students, that specifically walked them through really fun questions on how to interpret a question. So if it's asking you for, what are all of the following, which of the following characteristics? All of the, SpongeBob SquarePants has all of the following characteristics.
I see, okay.
So she was teaching them, what does it mean when a question has the word "all"?
Right.
What does it mean when a question has the word "most"? And so I really like that approach because they're doing it in five-to-10-minute sessions. She's made it really fun, but it is helping them get some test-taking literacy, while of course, no educator really wants to teach to the test.
Right.
Equipping them with some tools like we do in our high school for the ACT, SAT is probably a good idea in the 21st century. Dr. Vasberg, you want to talk about SORTA4?
Right, I was just going to add, I think you've received that in the board update, excuse me. One of the strategies around SORTA4 with the middle school principals is around test-taking strategies, and as Mrs. Fumo mentioned, we don't want to teach to the test, but there are logistical or testing protocols that are different with IAR than the MAP, and we'll make sure kids are prepared to answer questions in a certain way and use the technology appropriately.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Great job. Okay, now we'll move on to board member comments, or their board member comments at this time. Mr. Connor?
So, usually, this is Mr. Seagull's job, but I ask if I could say this, that really our hearts go out to the Coats family for the death of, I believe his name is Zashawn, and one of the reasons I wanted to do it is that my wife's home parish is St. Anthony's, and it happened right at the corner where the church is. So it's, it's really tragic for the family, and, and our hearts go out to them. And I'll just say, you know, a number of times a month, you know, parking right at that location, so it really hits home in a number of ways. So again, our hearts go out to that family.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon?
To be brief, I really wanted to just echo what Susan just said about the MLK celebration. I think anytime we can highlight the students, especially two or five, District 205 students for what they have done in a positive way, we should. And with that said, we want to thank our students, but, but District 205 really came out, the students came out and really showed their gifts and talents in that, in singing, praise dancing, or mining, or poetry. I want to just give a highlight on... I want to just give a highlight on Auburn and West, because they sang, their choir came out and they sung a wonderful song, two selections, and then, they had somebody do a poetry. And I think it's so important that we continue to have our students to be a part of community activities, because it transcends just school. It lets them know to be a part of your community, because you have to uplift your community if you want it to be better. And the more that they're in part of it, they'll feel there's a belonging, so they're, they're, they're invested. So, I want to thank District 205 for that.
Thank you. Any other board member comments?
Oh, now superintendent was there, and he stayed the whole time.
Okay, good. Okay, if not, we'll move on then to the consent portion of our agenda, including the following...
One more time, Earl was there too.
Okay, all right, there we go, okay. The meeting minutes of January 8th, 2019, payroll, accounts payable, purchase orders, contracts under 10,000, construction bid request log, and travel, the bid recommendations for the procurement card program, the asbestos abatement at Froberg and Hillman Schools, the demolition of the Kishawaki School, the old one, asbestos abatement at Kishawaki School, the recurring contracts for Heartland Business Systems, the addendum to consulting agreement for accounting assistance, the Learning A to Z for Froberg Elementary, the No Red Inc. for RISA, the Apple Inc. Education in Schools iPad Lease Title I, US Bank Chromebook Lease Title I, other consent items, including the monthly investment report through December of 2018, the financial results through December 2018, the RPS Managed Work Change Order List, the new school construction change order logs, the facility fee waiver request for Northwest Community Center, the memorandum of understanding with Ask Me Local 1275 on attendance, the memorandum of understanding for RBMA 2019 time off for bus, for bus, driving buses, and the Freedom of Information Log. Is there a motion and a second to approve these consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Siegel. Are there any items, consent items, that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Seeing none, then I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of the consent items.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We are now on to the closed session consent agenda items, including the HR organizational report and addendum, the closed session for student discipline, unless otherwise modified below. The board adopts and accepts the hearing officer's findings and recommendations in the following cases in which students expelled or suspended are prohibited from being on school grounds and school-sponsored activities without the prior written permission of the principal. Student 4248 is expelled for the remainder of this school year, 2018-19. Student 5007, the two-day suspension is affirmed. 5008, the four-day suspension is affirmed, and the following students are receiving EIA's. Student 1036, 1037, 3730, 3732, 3736, 3737, 3739, 3741, 3742, and student 343743. Is there a motion and a second to approve the closed session consent items?
So moved.
Second?
Mr. Connor, Ms. Siegel, are there any items that board members like to have pulled for separate consideration? Seeing none, then I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of the closed session consent items.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we are now on to the action items for tonight. Our first item is Linking Talent to Opportunity Memorandum of Understanding that Mrs. French presented. Is there a motion and a second to approve item 15A?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Connor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Siegel. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of item 15A.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Our second item for action tonight is Board Policy Revision for Board Policy 5260, the Professional Personnel Student Teachers. Is there a motion and a second to approve item 15B?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Siegel. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator call the roll.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Our third item is the Revision for Board Policy 5.280 Educational Support Personnel Duties and Qualifications. Is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Siegel. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of item 15C.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Our next item is the Kronos Workforce Timekeeper Upgrade and Cloud Migration that was presented by Mr. Barthol. Is there a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Connor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Siegel. Is there questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator, oops, Mrs. McCullough?
And I wasn't here for committee of the whole, so I apologize for this, but please explain, and I saw some of your comments in writing about this. So, three years is all we got out of what we bought with them back in January of 2015, and now, we're upgrading because it's taking too much of our staff time. Is it the software, and what is the issue? Why are we buying now? And also, while you're talking about that, tell me why we're going to continue with a company that didn't last more than three years, and that we didn't look to bid it out to someone else.
Sure, I'd be happy to answer those questions. So, first of all, to answer your first question regarding why we only got three years out of the software, so the base component of the software is still functional. There's some third-party components to that software, that being Java, as well as Adobe Flash. Those are technologies that are getting phased out for vulnerabilities, and when this software was purchased in 2015, or 2014, and implemented in 2015, shortly after that, actually, 2016 is really when Oracle started deprecating what's called Java plugins, and from a technology perspective, a lot of developers have moved away from those technologies. So, because we hadn't upgraded since 2015, we need to do so to be able to keep up with current technologies and reduce our vulnerabilities. As far as why we didn't look at other vendors, that was an option that we evaluated. We do have $200,000 invested in 75 time clocks that are throughout the district, which are proprietary to Kronos, so that played into a factor. And then, the total cost of ownership, if we were to compare staying at the current solution, upgrading in place and on-premise, going to the cloud, or going to a third-party vendor, our, our total cost of ownership for migrating and keeping with Kronos and moving to the cloud was actually the most appropriate route from a financial perspective. The company itself, Kronos, is a great software. They were, it works well with all of our bargaining unit rules. When we went out to bid in 2014, we actually had two vendors that had met all of our qualifications, one being Kronos, the other one being Time Clocks Plus, and they had what's called native integration with our Business Plus application. Those were the only two at that time. So, comparing those two, Time Clocks Plus did not have the capability to take on our business rules from the bargaining unit perspective, meaning we could not program it to meet all of our different bargaining units, rules that would have to be incorporated.
I understand why you can't program it to meet the bargaining. I've read that, and I didn't understand why. I mean...
So, with, with the bargaining unit rules, there's a lot of complexities on how to, how to program that. Some of them, I think we've got, what, eight, eight or, eight different bargaining units, and that software that we did not choose did not have that flexibility to be able to configure that many rules.
And in three years, there's no additional companies that could step up with a bid on, on doing the same thing that the Kronos has. I get the 200,000, and I get that we're extending the time with them, and I, I'm not understanding, we're going from, what, 69,000 a month to 138,000 a month, right? And you're saying that's negligible, that it's, the cost is the same, there's...
Sure, so that's an annual cost.
Or annual, I apologize.
Sure, no problem. But, we are seeing savings in the backend on our return on investment from the time we've spent to stabilize and support the current infrastructure, so we're going to see those costs recuperated, and that's what we're going to be able to prove when we report back, based on reviewing our help desk tickets, as well as our Q metrics, to be able to show that savings and the soft costs from not just the IT and IS aspect of supporting the software, but also the overtime and the, that was, that's been spent by finance, and then the timekeepers as well, and the lost time we've had there. So, we're going to gain that back in that respect.
And remind me how long we're locked into Kronos then with this contract?
This is a, this is a three-year contract.
And the original one was five-year, or was it just three-year, and we're just doing a new contract? It was annual recurring? There was no timeframe on it?
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Dixon?
So, we're in a three-year contract, then after that, we upgrade, or what would be the, so, I guess, would we stay in the same, I'm sorry, would we stay in the, what we have now, is that, that has the ability to, would that change? Would something else come up that we have to change, we would have to, because technology is always changing? So, what do you see in the future? What do you...
So, it's always hard to gauge at the, at the current moment, but the, the technologies that we're putting into place with moving to this solution are, are what every, what we see the shift right now, being what's called HTML5, and to be able to present things in a web browser without using the additional plugin. So, it's, it's the direction right now where technology is headed, and I don't see a foreseeable change in the next three, three to five years, but again, I can't, I can't comment on what might happen, you know, five, five years down the road, but...
Any others?
I just wanted to add that this is being brought forward because of the technology and the need for the upgrade, because of the security vulnerabilities. Payroll is completely satisfied with the application, otherwise, we would have planned to go out for bid, which really is about a year-long process with an application like this. So, this isn't a matter of it not meeting the district's needs from a, from a payroll perspective or a timekeeping perspective. It's really more of a security vulnerability issue, and making sure that the system stays upgraded over time.
If I could just want to add one thing to that, Chris. It, it is a good application for payroll, but we are having a lot of processing problems because of the Java. So, we are spending additional resources. We don't always have to pay overtime, because the people that are doing this work are somewhat on, I mean, two of them are salary ones, on hourly, so we are paying some overtime, but it's really, our timekeepers are having a lot of struggles with this because of the Java, and so are my payroll, my payroll team.
Mr. Connor?
So, one overall comment, because this has come up several times, I will just say this, that there is a, always an amount of risk you take every time you buy software. And one of the things that happens is, there are vulnerabilities that are found, and all you have to do is go look this up, and I don't care whether you're Microsoft, I don't care who you are, you are going to find that there are issues. And, and I think that most IT folks do the best they can at that time, and then, conditions change, and sometimes, things are better, and you want to take advantage of that. So, you always have to look at, what's my cost for changing? And if I remember correctly, to Mrs. McCullough's point, is, it would have cost considerably more to go to somebody new, and it would have been a year's worth of time. So, the real deal there is both the cost of conversion, as well as the actual cost of ownership of, of the new software. So, sometimes, you stay with somebody even though they're not perfect, because the cost to do else-wise is so much more. Now, what I'll say is, we might find ourselves in two years, and there might be whole other platforms that would make, say, Kronos obsolete. That's absolutely a risk you always take. So, I, trust me, I know this, I know every verse of the Song of Frustration on this. I can sing it backwards and forwards, and in probably three different languages. So, I truly get the frustration with this, but I did look at it, and, you know, one of the things I will say is, that specific metric you had promised to come back to us, so I think the difference, it was like almost $70,000 difference on that cost, and that we'll track that and come back and report. I think one of the things, and if I might say so, what rightfully Mrs. McCullough has brought up several times on these, is that we don't come back and say, "You said it was this much, we did say that much." I think that would be really helpful, because then it makes it more transparent.
Okay. And just to refresh my memory, Kronos is the timekeeping system for all of our hourly-paid staff, does not include teachers?
It does include teachers, but teachers do not swipe in.
Okay.
So, it's 80% of our budget, and this is how we're tracking it through Kronos.
All right, okay.
And it integrates with Business Plus, and we, truthfully, we would not have capacity to change at this point, like Mr. Chaski said. Senior implementation, that's probably pretty aggressive to make all the changes that we would need to change, and we, truthfully, do not have the capacity at this time.
Okay, Mr. Connor?
All I was going to say is, that's a really good point, and remember, a lot of these, if you don't have some of these capabilities in the software, that equals more cost because of manual time. I think that's just one of the rules on this one, is that that's very common.
Ms. McCullough?
And Java was the thing three years ago, and HTML is, wasn't?
It was, there was a transition period right around the middle to the end of 2016-ish, where, where they started phasing away, phasing out of what's, what's termed as browser plugins in general, because of the vulnerabilities, and then the issues with cross-platform anomalies, meaning where I have one, one application that uses this version of Java, and I've got another one that uses this, you try to open one up, and it's having issues because I have it configured for the other one.
Right.
So, they've moved away, and then, they're slowly moving away from, from Java and browser-based plugins in general.
Crystal ball. With regard to who swipes in and who doesn't, and we've had this conversation before, I don't know if it's contractual, and the fact that it's a cultural, that the teachers don't swipe in and out, but beyond the fact that, you know, we don't have to have their time because they are salaried, there is a, somewhat of a safety issue, knowing who is swiped in, being in a building, and who is not in a building. And so, I just wonder if we could look at having teachers as well, or is it contractually prohibitive to have them swipe in and out? Because this is, again, you know, if you have an active emergency situation, you want to know who was there and who wasn't there in the building. Is there any reason we can't have them swipe in and out?
Mr. Zetker is going to answer that.
Yeah, that would be, that's going to be a bargained issue, that we would have to bargain with the RIA.
Okay.
And they wouldn't have to swipe in and out. It's a presence swipe, so if you're salaried right now, we check in with a presence. So, like myself, I would check in once, I would swipe in when I come in. So, do they do a presence swipe? They do not, because they're contractual, but certainly exploring.
If they, if they don't show up, we know, because there's a bunch of kids in the hallway, so we, so we know who's there. We have a sub.
Or how many subs the school requested that day. Okay, I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of item D, the Kronos Workforce Timekeeper Upgrade.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, item E, the Middle School English Language Arts resource has been pulled. So, our next item is the World Language Resource... our next item is the World Language Resource Adoption, which Ms. Neri presented last time. Is there a motion and a second to approve item 15F?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rollins. Any questions or discussion? I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of the World Languages Resource Adoption.
Ms. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. The item G was pull, that's the Augmentative and Alternative Communication Devices. So our next item is the Fiscal Year 2020 Student Fees that Mrs. Yara presented last committee of the whole. So is there a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Second.
Connor, second by Mr. Rollins. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of action item H.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
We are now on to new business, and Mr. Phillips is going to present the Bellis Firm of Architecture for the Design and Construction and Removal and Replacement of a Walk-In Freezer at Flynn Middle School. Is he back there? Somebody's in the back room back there. Is Mr. Phillips back there? Okay. Okay, Mr. Rollins, you want to present this? No, okay. So I guess we don't have a presentation on that thing. Must have been some type of emergency or whatever. Okay. All right, we'll do that then. So if there are no other comments or agenda items, I'll take a recommendation for the board to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Mr. Rollins, you want to?
My only comment is I've gotten a text from my wife warning me there's a layer of ice under the snow, so everybody be careful on the way home.
All right, go slow, all right, okay. So we have a motion and a second to adjourn? All in favor? Opposed? We are adjourned at 8:16 PM.